Good evening. Noting the time and presence of quorum, I'd like to call this September 15th, 2025, meeting the Acton Select Board Order. We'll start out, as we always do, with resident concerns. If we have anyone who'd like to step forward. And we try to limit these to three minutes.
What's that?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, yeah.
Does this mic work? Yes, it does. Hi, everyone. I'm Glenn Cody. I'm newly elected on the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee, and I'm the Select Board Liaison. I just wanted to give you all a brief update on what we've been working on over at the school committee to address the fiscal challenges we're all facing. We heard a comprehensive update from DMG, that's District Management Group. They're a consultancy organization that deals with consulting school districts across the country that are in similar situations to ours. The update included the ongoing strategic planning reorganization process we're dealing with. They also presented a very thorough data analysis of their summer diagnostic findings that reviewed the following: enrollment trends, student needs, academic outcomes, finances and facilities. I'm happy to say that they reported that our school district is in the top 5% of student outcomes based on cost per pupil in the state, according to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And, oh, did I lose my space here maybe a little bit? Yeah, and we're facing declining enrollment, more diverse and complex student needs, persistent achievement gaps, and rising costs to staffing and aging facilities. Open enrollment specifically was highlighted as both a strength and a challenge, with community members divided on its impacts, as I'm sure most of you know. Looking ahead, the consultancy group outlined the phase process as follows. The steering committee is now refining draft strategic plan language with finalization expected later this month. Using that framework, we'll develop reorganization scenarios this fall, and those scenarios will be reviewed by the steering committee in October before being shared with the wider community shortly after. And I want to stress this for members? Yep. I want to stress this for members listening at home. No decisions have been made, and public input is welcome to this process on every step of the way. We're going to have multiple opportunities for community input through surveys, focus groups, public forums, to ensure that community outreach is well implemented in this process. And outreach will be structured to both include volunteers and randomly selected participants to capture a wide range of perspectives. So that's the update. I'll be at the Tribe Board meeting, too, on Wednesday, October 22nd. I'll stick around for a bit in the audience, and I'll mainly be a silent observer, but good to see you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move ahead then. I've got a couple of announcements. The Department of Public Works Building Committee will have their next meeting on Wednesday, September 24th, 7:00 p.m., in this room, Room 204. We'll be reviewing the next set of documents being produced by Arrow Street, where they're looking at some of the alternatives suggested for the construction of the new building. Meetings are open to the public. We encourage everyone to attend. It's a big project. We will be most likely looking for funding of some sort at this Springtown meeting, so we're trying to get a running start on it. The other announcement I have is Tuesday, September 30th, 7:00 p.m., in this room, Professor Robert Allison will be speaking as part of the Acton 250 speaker series. The working title for his talk is "After the Bridge," looking at some of the follow-on events after the battle on April 19th, 1775. These are tremendously popular presentations, and they are recorded, and you can pick them up on YouTube as well after the fact. But typically, we can pretty much fill this room with Professor Allison's speech topics. Town manager.
Thank you. Just a few quick items. We have our Professional Development Day on Friday, so town offices will not be open Friday morning, or Friday afternoon for that matter, and I just want to make sure people knew that. And I hope some of the Select Board members can join us. Staff love to see you if you're able to be there. Also, later in this meeting, we'll be having an update from Fire Department. Chief Arnn will be here, and Deputy Chief Sammet. We have a special presentation that we're going to be doing just before that. We're going to be recognizing two of our Fire Department members for some of the actions they took off-duty recently that we would like to recognize them for. That's Connor Caveney and Jonathan Chan. We expect that they'll be here around 7:00, so just for timing-wise, just so you know that we may have that coming in later. And then finally, I received an update this morning from our legislative delegation. There are a few things that Acton Town Meeting has, and the Select Board, have put forward to the state legislature for approval. Two of them are moving along pretty well. One of them is the Fire Department and Police Department and Public Safety Radius changes, where we want to allow people to live further out. And the other is the Acton Memorial Library change, which is both moving forward. Not as much good news on the other ones, but good news on those two. Thanks.
Thank you. Comments from any of my colleagues? Alyssa.
Thank you. I don't have any board or committee announcements to make, but I just wanted to announce that Oktoberfest, the annual event in West Acton Village, primarily at Gardner Field, but some other locations around the village, will be open. That's happening on Saturday, next Saturday, September 27th, from 10:00 to 3:00. And the town will have some booths there as well: sustainability, economic development. And Fran and I will be there, once again, to share information about volunteering on boards and committees, and maybe we'll have some cookies, too, with one of the logos.
Thank you. Comments from... Okay. We will move ahead then to new and special business. Updates from treasurer and collector Patrick McIntyre.
Yes, as he's getting ready, I'd just like to introduce Patrick McIntyre. He started within the last few months as our treasurer-collector, and he's here tonight to talk about all the interesting things he's been working on. Patrick?
Thank you. Once again, my name is Patrick McIntyre. I started on July 7th. I started my municipal career in 2005. I was a cash manager for a software company up in Westford, and had two young kids at home, and I was looking for a little better work-life balance, and the elected treasurer position opened up in Clinton. And I had my family's support, so I ran for that. I won, and I ran two more times before I moved on, became the appointed treasurer-collector in Boxborough, and then I did some time in Plainville, and most recently, I was in Athol for the last five and a half years, and I'm happy to be here in Acton. Like I said, I did start on July 7th. I was met with my staff, Brandy Rando, who is the Assistant Treasurer Collector, the Principal Clerk, Emily Beliza, and I have a part-time woman, Anne Miles, that works in the office. Unfortunately, we're losing Brandy to accounting. That's her background, so she is moving to staff accounting position later this month, so the interview process for her position begins this week. So we're going to have a fresh, new team, but the good thing is Brandy's only going to be a couple desks away, so she can help answer questions and train the new person. So if you don't mind, I'd like to go through a couple items. I was tasked to address the town's debt from the start, and one of the products that is out there that you guys use is Unibank for our financial service advising, and they have a product called Base Fund. It's a free online debt tracking software, and it brings in all the debt, it gives you nice transparency, gives you greater reporting capabilities, and it also gives you the ability to allow other users to use it. So I've granted permission to the Budget Director, the Town Manager, and the Town Accountant, but we can also read-only access to our orders, which cuts down on a lot of questions, so they have access to that as well. And they're not going to be stagnant, they're going to roll out other products, so if the town does any sort of short-term borrowing with a bond anticipation note, that can be added, so at all times, we'll have a full view of the town's debt. One of the other things we talked about was investments. The town did move to move to the Prudent Investor at a recent town meeting, so starting on October 1st, all the town's eligible trust funds will be moved to Prudent Investor from the legal list. The legal list is an antiquated list of 22 stocks that towns and cities were able to invest in. With Prudent Investor, it opens up a much wider array of things to invest in, which will maximize the town's returns, and it's being invested in a more diverse and updated way versus the 22 stocks from, I think it was 1987, that the last list was updated. So that's happening October 1st. Because the town is quarterly, it didn't make sense to peel out of the investments mid-quarter, so we're going to cut it off on October 1st. So hopefully, at the end of Q2 and the beginning of Q3, it will show some positive returns by making this change. I think the biggest change that we're going to be doing is looking at the town's banking right now. I've always been, as I told you before, I was a cash manager, so I'm always looking at banks and their viability and their trustworthiness and just their overall well-being. So we're going to make some changes to the banking structure, and one of the things is called the concentration account. So this account is going to help facilitate town payments. Right now, it's very cumbersome to fund a warrant. You have to take from this account to this account to this account, move it over there, and shift it over there, and this calls in. So this is going to facilitate this. So what it also does is it allows idle funds to be earning interest for the town. We talked about this at the school meeting. So in past practices, what a treasurer-collector would do is, if the warrant was, like last week's warrant, 1.3 million, move it from whatever bank into the payables account and just let it wind down. This new structure is a zero-balance sweep account, so the funds will stay in this main concentration account, and just the checks that are presented that day will sweep those funds over, bring the account back down to zero, and then just move on. So there could be days that there would be no presentations on the payroll or payables accounts, so all those funds stay in the concentration account, earning the town interest. So for example, back in June, the town cut a check for 144,000 to Maya for the Health Trust. That was on June 3rd. That check did not clear until August 27th, so 85 days that 144,000 stayed in that payables account, earning zero interest. Now, going forward, those funds will be in that account, earning the town interest. So part of that also relies on where the funds are coming from, so we have a lockbox. So if somebody wants to mail their check into the PO box, that goes to the account as well. And the collectors' and treasurer's accounts here, things that are received over the counter, they all feed the revenue part of those accounts. So as long as there's money in that account, checks are going to get paid, warrants are going to get covered, and we're going to earn money on that account. Part of the other reason why I'm doing the concentration account, and I'm also cutting down on the number of accounts, I found that there were a few bank accounts that there was no access to the funds. There was no ability to wire the money out. So I've changed those relationships with the banks, and I've consolidated them into other banks, and part of that consolidation, I carved some of those monies out and put them into CDs, six-month CDs to be specific. I think we're going to see a Fed rate change as soon as this Thursday, so we're trying to get ahead of that by locking them into a six-month CD. Why not nine or 12? I think because the bank knows there's going to be more rate changes between now and the end of the calendar year, so they didn't want to give really good rates for nine to 12. So six months was the best we could do, so we put some money aside for that. But also, we kept some funds liquid, so that if we do have a funding situation where we need some money, there's liquid assets in these banks. So that's going to be a big help when it comes time to do our interest rates, interest income for the next fiscal year. Lastly, tax title. Tax title has always been something that I've focused on, straight from my days in Clinton, which was difficult because I live and worked in the same town. So some of the people that were in tax title, I grew up with their families and friends and everything, so it was kind of difficult. But I've been successful with it, and part of that success is I've partnered with KP Law, so I requested a legal representation change, so we're going with KP Law now, specifically Thomas McInnity. I've had a long relationship with Thomas and KP Law, and we've had great success. Fortunately for the town of Acton, there's only 15 active cases in land court, which is great. We will change that because there are cases, there are accounts that should be put into land court, but we're going to try other methods first before we have to take any further legal action. You do have one active case that could come up to a decision any time now. It's a single-family residence here in town. Once that decision is handed down, we now have 30 days to decide what we're going to do with the property. We can either retain it as town-owned property, or we can follow the new process. It used to be great because you could go out to an auction. Now we have to do a sale, so we have to get an independent appraiser, and we have to do that whole process, so it's a little bit more cumbersome than in years past. But the good thing is, like I said, you only have 15 active cases, and hopefully, with offering payment plans, we can get the other past due accounts back caught up, and we won't have to take any further legal action. So that's all I have for you this evening. Did you have anything, or any questions or comments for me?
Board members? Jim?
Thanks so much for the report and for all the improvements you've made already. Yeah, it's fun working in an environment where there's actually interest rates. It's a good thing. A question was, with the new tax case procedures, I'm wondering if there's a connection between you, a communication between you and the Acton Community Housing Corporation, in terms of whether any of the property that we might suddenly have to deal with over 30 days would be appropriate for, you know, town-managed affordable housing? That's not true in most cases, but if there are cases where we're getting property that could help solve our immense affordability housing problem, that would be great.
Sure. As I mentioned, this one case is a single-family home, so it's not a multi-unit, I think, but if I could get the contact information, I can reach out and show them any other cases that'd be out there that could fit that criteria.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
You got a good running start?
Looking forward to it.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, Patrick.
All right, we've got a few minutes. We have a public hearing scheduled for 6:30, so... Sounds good. We'll move in front of you. You have a draft decision for a site plan special permit, and two U.S. special permits for the Marcus Lewis Racquet Club to construct a clubhouse, pickleball enclosure, and tennis court enclosure within a portion of the property located at 45 Nagog Park. The applicant's been in a couple of times. I think that the decision, draft decision here should answer any of the questions that we've raised. I will point out that we still, any decision we make in regards to this item would not impact Item 6, that we'll be discussing later on, which is the fossil-fuel-free buy law, which I expect will take a little bit longer to discuss. Does anybody have any questions? We've got our planner right here that can answer it. Nate, if you've got any other comments you'd like to make?
None for me. I guess if you guys have any questions about the conditions, I'm here to help.
Jim?
One of the things we briefly talked about was whether the board had already voted in favor of the mandatory findings for these permits, and maybe you've had time to check on whether we had done that already?
Yep. The board has made the mandatory findings.
Oh, great. Okay. Yeah, I thought that the special permit draft adhered very closely to all the conversations that we'd had on the board. I thought it reflected what we were trying to do.
Any other comments, questions from my colleagues? All right. Jim?
I could make the motion.
Appreciate that.
Okay. I would move to approve three special permit applications. The U.S. special permit application number 6/5/2025-504 for commercial recreation, the U.S. special permit application number 6/12/2025-506 for reduced parking requirements, and the site plan special permit application number 05/30/2025-494, all for 45 Nagog Park.
Second? Moved and seconded. Do you have any last-minute questions? Not? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We're approved. Thank you. Let's jump down to the consent agenda. There's exactly one item. Approve the appointment of Eric Heels as Associate Member of the Transportation Advisory Committee with a term to expire on June 30th, 2026.
I move to approve Consent Item Number 8.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. We've got seven minutes to debate here.
Yeah, so speaking of the Transportation Advisory Committee, there's a meeting planned later this month where we're going to have some presentations, both, I think, from the LRTA, but also from our team internally, led by Laura Ducharme, where we conducted a mobility management study, and some of the results of that work will be presented at the next TAC meeting, which I believe is the Wednesday, the 20th. I can find that, but it's the next meeting. And we have some really interesting observations about the existing transportation programs and some ideas for improvements going forward, so I encourage you to check that out if you're available. I think it's usually in the afternoon, late afternoon, and there's more details on the website if you'd like to find out more.
Thank you. A couple of items that I did not address in my initial remarks. Through the hard work of our Economic Development Department, we've scheduled quite a few ribbon cuttings coming up. We've got three of them scheduled for this Wednesday, the 17th. 9 o'clock is going to be Magenta Dance Studios. 10 o'clock is going to be the new J. Crew site over on Great Road, and 11 o'clock is the Tennis Boutique. So it's good to see that there continues to be interest in people moving into or staying here in Acton to do business.
If I could follow up on that, the Economic Development Office, led by Patricia Costa, we also publish a bi-weekly or twice-monthly Business Boost newsletter, and I highly encourage folks to check it out. It has a lot of interesting information about things that are happening with our business community, profiles of businesses, even local trivia about economic development trivia. So actonma.gov/business is where you can find more information about it, or you can just email the manager's office, manager@actonma.gov, if you have questions about how to find it.
Thank you.
I'll do the... Want me to do the trivia?
Yep.
Okay. So, this month's trivia, let's see who can get it. It's regarding a person by the last name of Wood, who came up with a manufacturing process, which was never patented, but took off and was really a successful way to produce pencils. Oh, wait, I think I just gave the answer.
Shoot, pencils!
All right. Wait a minute. So there's the answer on the question. All right, Patricia. So we walked through the food pantry. The Acton Food Pantry is relocating to 19 and 21 Maple Street. They're currently under construction. They're hoping to finish the construction this fall and then hope to open to the public at the beginning of the calendar year. It looks really nice inside, so I think the community's really going to like it. It's going to be a great resource for people right next to the train station, easy access by vehicle also and bicycle, so check that out. Coming soon.
Thank you. Also, for folks that follow these items, the Acton 250 has a committee meeting, which will be on Thursday, the 18th, 7:00 p.m., down in Room 9. We're looking at going over, instead of doing a speakers program every month, it's going to be on a quarterly basis. Our meetings are usually very lightly attended, but we encourage folks to come in, especially if you've got some ideas for unique and different speakers and topics that you think would be appropriate. The 250 Committee, as presently constituted, will continue on until September or October of '26, and that is scheduled to sunset. There has been some interest expressed by some of the various historical organizations here in town to create an alliance of groups to kind of continue and build on the progress that we've made with the 250 program and making it sort of a continuous thing. It would include not only the town's participation, but also groups like the Acton Historical Society, the Ironwork Farm, Friends of Pine Hawk, and some of the other groups that have been, Acton Minutemen, that have been interested and have been so instrumental in keeping things going. There's also at that upcoming meeting this coming Thursday, we'll probably be discussing some sort of a major event in somewhat similar to the event that we had back in April at the Discovery Museum. We're thinking about having another event of similar magnitude, probably in June or July of '26. So there's still a lot going on. Certainly, I've been very pleased with not only the participation amongst the adult population, but the student population turnout has been really great, so there's a lot of interest in history, so I think the committee has done exactly what it was intended to do. So certainly, anybody that has any ideas, please attend the meeting or reach out to us. We'd be happy to entertain any and all ideas about future programs. And now at 6:30. So I will read the legal notice. The Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on September 15th at 6:30 p.m. in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, 204. P M in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room two oh four at the Acton Town Hall, four seventy-two Main Street, Acton, and virtually www.actonma.gov-meeting/sb on the application of Vibe, Hot Yoga, and Pilates for use special permit for commercial recreation over two thousand square feet under zoning bylaw section three point five point one five footnote nine and ten point three at two fifty-four Great Road. Application materials and how to participate remotely are available online at Acton Town Hall. And I will not read the collection number because it's got too many numbers in it, but certainly those are available through our website. And the applicant come forward.
The applicant, I believe, is with us via a Zoom connection. Elise, can you hear us? Elise?
She said, just give her a second. She's unmuted.
Okay.
Hey Bernie, good evening, everyone. I'm on Zoom and I can hear you.
Oh, excellent, great. My name is Bernard Gibbons. This is Melissa.
Melissa Griffin.
Melissa Griffin. She works with Elise. Elise is traveling in Italy right now, so she had to join us via Zoom. We had hoped to be at an earlier hearing and we were, you know, just course of events, we got delayed a little bit, so she'll join us via Zoom. My name's Bernard Gibbons. I work for Larry Gordon, who is the owner of the shopping center, the Gould Shopping Center, where the applicant, Elise Simeoni, and her company, Vibe Yoga, would like to lease a space from us. We would very much like to bring them into our shopping center to be a tenant. We went through some extensive renovations recently to create environments for companies like hers, through some speculative creation of smaller spaces and what used to be the Ralph Jordan store and the paper store. So we created some really nice spaces that would be ideal for businesses like hers. There is a regulation in Acton that any recreational type of business over two thousand square feet requires special permit from the Select Board, a special permission to do that. So, yeah, we wanted to come here and try to accomplish this. We did some drawings and some submittals on the type of layout that we were going to have, and I think at this point, Vibe Yoga, it's important to understand as well, they have a location in Chelmsford as well as Westford. This would be their third location, and it's a growing, thriving business. They do yoga and Pilates. So it's a really a health, well-being driven business. And Elise, you know, why don't you tell the board about yourself and your company and what you'd like to do here?
Sure, thank you Bernie for kicking us off. And again, apologies that I'm not there in person. But yes, Vibe Yoga and Pilates, we are five years. We've been in the community of Chelmsford and then quickly expanded into Westford in twenty twenty-three. We are a thriving business, and as Bernie said, we're very active in the communities of both Chelmsford and Westford, and really just looking to expand our services in communities that really don't have such offerings and really to bring the holistic wellness, you know, closer to home to more community settings and populations that we can. We've gotten a lot of requests to come to Acton, and I can just say that we are really excited and really looking forward to coming into that community. We also do a lot of community collaboration with other businesses. We host fundraises throughout both of our locations. We're really just active and really wanting to be embedded into communities and be a part, just feeling more like we're part of home there. I can tell you, I've been living in Chelmsford since for the past twenty years, so I do often float through Chelmsford, Westford, Acton, Concord, and all of the local surrounding communities. Is there any questions or anything else I could add?
Okay, thank you. Do we have a select board member assigned to this? Okay, I guess we'll rely upon Nate, our planner. But I will ask my colleagues if you have any questions you'd like to ask of Elise. It appears not. Nate, we've got a draft decision here. Would you like to speak to it?
Sure, I just have the memo here, but Planning Division has no concerns. I believe Health and Fire submitted comments. Those are comments that can be addressed at the building or occupancy permit stage.
Thank you. Any other questions? Melissa?
So I have a question about the septic wastewater generation gallons per day. I looked at the twenty twenty-two report, Title V form, and it looked like there was a note about one thousand five hundred fifty-four gallons per day, but the application totals one hundred sixty-three gallons per day, and it lists a number of seats and describes the venue as a theater slash auditorium rather than a gym with showers. So I'm just wondering where we are with Title V compliance? And I've been trying to figure out what the Title V requirements are, and what I found in the C M R, I think it's three-ten, was twenty gallons per day per occupant? And it looks like our, from the note about how many customers would be there, there would be up to fifty-five customers and one to two employees. So that's quite a bit more than one hundred sixty-three gallons per day. So what did Health say? Or what does the applicant say?
Yeah, I'd like to address that. The applicant wouldn't be in touch with that type of technical aspect of this transaction because they'd just be leasing a space in our large shopping center. Matthew Dow at the Health Department encouraged me to come here forward here tonight and resolve this issue about the use. And then we will be going back to the Board of Health with calculations, okay, based on some type of mutual understanding about this particular use. Yoga, it could be termed that a gymnasium is kind of an onerous definition where twenty gallons per day, that that's a lot of water, significantly more than a business like this could even physically generate, okay, in a day. But we are going to go through the process with the building permit issue, go to the Health Department and get signed off based on something that everybody's okay with, with regard to the septic and the water usage. So, yeah, they, you know, I'm not really sure how this came about, but a business like this now requires showers to be installed for this type of use, even though technically they didn't want to have showers and their customers really didn't need it. So, but it's something that we're willing to work with, and like I said, so this would all be conditional upon an approval from the Health Department and the Building Department to move forward.
Thank you. So we just need to worry about the use, and Board of Health will take over later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from my colleagues on the board? Questions from the public? It appears not. I entertain a motion?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, public hearing is closed. We'll entertain a second motion. David?
I move to approve a use special permit for Vibe, Hot Yoga, and Pilates for commercial recreation over two thousand feet at two fifty-four Great Road.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve. Any final comments? Alyssa?
Do we need to specify that we have found all of the mandatory findings, like read them out?
Let's make sure we do that.
Okay. That's separate from the motion?
No, we'll do it as part of the motion. David, would you amend your motion and add the mandatory findings?
Yes, I just have to find a current list of the mandatory findings. Okay, I'd like to add to my motion that we find it's consistent with the master plan, is in harmony with the purpose and intent of this of the zoning bylaw, will not be detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood in which it's take place, is and is appropriate for the site in question, and complies with all applicable requirements of the zoning bylaw.
Second?
All right, the amended motion has been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Guys are set to go? Just get things squared away with the Health Department.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, I'm waiting for a nod from the fire chief to tell me that everybody not quite ready. Okay. We'll hold off for a minute on the presentation.
Yeah, please.
So on the agenda tonight, we'll be having an update from Chief Arum on the Fire Department Deployment Pilot Program, but before that, we have a special presentation regarding two members of our department and some actions that they took recently off duty. And Chief Arum is here to make that initial presentation.
Good evening. As you know, fire and EMS personnel dedicate themselves every day to saving lives, protecting property, and helping people in their time of greatest need. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing two of our own who went above and beyond while they were off duty, stepping in without hesitation to save lives at risk. On August fourth, two thousand twenty-five, while driving to a family event, firefighter EMT Connor Capney, who joined Acton Fire on June of this year, was traveling on Route one ninety when he noticed a vehicle stopped at an overpass that was unfortunately known as notorious for suicide jumpers. Connor observed a man standing on the roof of his car, preparing to climb the fence with the intent to jump. Another passerby was holding on to the man's foot desperately, trying to prevent him from jumping. Recognizing the urgency, Connor immediately stopped to render aid while his wife contacted nine one one. Working together with the bystander, he was able to help hold off the individual safely from jumping until law enforcement and EMS arrived and the person was transported to receive care. This is Connor. Four days later, on August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, firefighter paramedic Jonathan Chan, who joined Acton Fire last November, was participating in a pickup basketball game in Lowell when a thirty-nine-year-old player suddenly collapsed in cardiac arrest. Without hesitation, Jonathan immediately began lifesaving measures. When Lowell Fire Personnel arrived, Jonathan identified himself as a paramedic, provided a clear report, and assumed command of patient care. He initiated defibrillation and directed coordinated efforts until the ambulance and an advanced life support team arrived. His decisive actions resulted in what we refer to as ROSC, Return of Spontaneous Circulation. The following day, the patient's wife contacted firefighter paramedic Chan to thank him, sharing that her husband, a father of two young children, was alive because of his quick response. The patient himself was able to personally thank Jonathan via FaceTime from his hospital bed as he recovered neurologically intact, thanks to the actions Jonathan recognized of the situation and took early interventions. Jonathan Chan. Both firefighter paramedic Jonathan Chan and firefighter EMT Connor Capney went above and beyond, demonstrating remarkable courage and humanity in moments of great need. Their actions remind us all of the unwavering commitment of our members carry, whether on duty or off duty, whether in the community or beyond. Tonight, we are honored to recognize them both for their extraordinary service.
So I have certificates of recognition for both of these gentlemen. And we have the Isaac Davis Challenge Coin, which we present to individuals who've gone above and beyond what normally be expected of them. I'm just struck by the fact that our folks are never off duty. They're always here to help us, and I thank you. First is the certificate of recognition for outstanding public assistance to firefighter EMT paramedic Jonathan Chan for his actions in saving the life of a person in cardiac arrest while off duty. Jonathan. And certificate of recognition for outstanding public assistance to firefighter EMT Connor Capney for actions in saving the life of a person in distress while off duty. On behalf of the board, thank you once again. Okay, chief, that softened up the crowd for you.
Just waiting for the slide to show up. Okay, good evening once again. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the department pilot program that we've undertaken over the past several months. When the North Acton Fire Station opened in February twenty twenty-two, no additional personnel were added to the department, and existing staffing was simply reassigned. This resulted in four stations staffed with only two personnel each, plus a shift captain who was assigned as one of the to one of the stations but was often on the road. It quickly became clear that this model presented some significant challenges, including staffing of two members per station, continued reliance on cross-staffing of our apparatus, lack of onsite supervision at three out of four stations, a perceived negative impact on the recruitment and retention of personnel, declining morale and increased personnel conflicts, difficulty conducting training as members needed to be to assemble at a single location, and temporary closure of two stations when responding to requests for mutual aid, limited guidance and mentoring for our new members unfamiliar with the town and department operations as they were often assigned to the ambulances. operations as they were often assigned to the ambulance at Station 1. Next slide, please. So, in the spring of 2024, Criterion Associates did a retrospective study on station location. Using some of that information, on February 10th, after collaboration with the Firefighters' Union, we worked together to try to determine a new model for a response. So, on February 10th, 2025, we transitioned to a two-station model using two districts. Station 4 would serve the North Acton District, and Station 2 would serve the South Acton District. I'm just going to jump ahead a little bit, saying that we used this model for several months. Station 2 was not really prepared to house five members, and it was quite crowded, and I commend the personnel for working with us to try and staff out of that station. So, on May 18th, we transitioned into a three-station model using the same two districts. So now, we had Station 2 in South Acton, Station 3 in West Acton, and Station 4 in North Acton. And again, jumping ahead a little bit, in mid-December, we're going to have to close Station 3 due to a tight tank installation, which is expected to take two to three months. So, we will not then move the crews from Station 3 to Station 1 in the center, and we'll have to update some of our response models accordingly. Next slide, please. So, why did we do the pilot in the first place? I told you some of the challenges we were having, and we wanted to improve safety of our members. I'm not sure if you're all aware, but in, I believe it was 1997, OSHA instituted what's called the "two-in-two-out" rule, which means that we can't send firefighters into what's known as an IDLH, or immediately dangerous to life and health situation, unless we have two crew members outside to serve as immediate rescue should they need it. So generally, we follow that two-in-two-out rule, and by consolidating our stations, getting more people to assemble at the same time, that allows additional firefighters to arrive simultaneously at an incident and provide for that immediate action. We're also looking to... Never ends. We're also looking to improve efficiency of operations. The National Institute of Standards and Technology, known as NIST, several years ago did a study looking at crew size. The optimal crew size according to NFPA, or the National Firefighters' Standards, is a four-person engine crew. So, we wanted to try and move to a three-person engine crew. We were able to do so by consolidation on one of our pieces of apparatus, and we chose to do that at the busiest engine at North Acton. This proved to be immediately effective and efficient, as shortly after going to this model, we had a mattress fire at one of the apartment buildings. Typically, if we had showed up in our previous model, we would have had two people show up, the person driving would have to now get out, set the pump, and the person in the front seat would have to give a report, do a size up, grab the hose, take the hose in through several stairwells up to try and find the apartment where the fire was, which is an extremely difficult task for a single person to do. And that pump operator would then also have to abandon the pump, follow up their teammate into the building to help with the line, fire attack line, and everyone's kind of hoping that someone's going to arrive to manage the pump. We only have about a minute and a half of water in that pump when it's charged and flowing water. So, having that third person in this particular call allowed two people to take the charged hose line in and allowed the pump operator to maintain the pump, and at the same time, then also able to attach to a local hydrant so that they can maintain their water supply. So, that three-person crew proved very valuable to us in safe operations. Other things that we wanted to do was increase supervision, mentoring, and coaching opportunities. By having our newest members assigned to the ambulance in the center without supervision, without knowledge of the town, was very difficult. The only way they could get training, if you will, is if we sent people over to them or we sent them over to another station to receive it. But they were always busy, getting training interrupted and things like that. So, by having the newest members assigned to North Acton now, that allowed them to be under the tutelage of a lieutenant, and they could get the training in both Fire and EMS, as well as learn the town and understand different things. If, for example, two new members were in Station 1 and heard that they had to respond to Kelly's Corner, they may not know that local terminology. So, it was valuable to have them with the lieutenants. Morale improved, especially up north with people working together. When you have two people in a station, if there's personnel conflicts, that leads to problems. And then what do you do? How do you manage those problems? By shifting people. Now, that gets very difficult because you can't just move one person, now you've got to move two people. So, morale was improved both up north and down south. I had one of the captains tell me now that down south, they were all eating dinner together. I'm sure you know at home at your families, you know, when the kids come in and stuff, it's always helpful to have dinner together, talk about what's going on, have coffee together or whatever the situation might be, understanding that their meals are interrupted quite frequently. We believe it's also assisted with recruitment and retention of personnel. Firefighting is not a job where you come in, sit at a desk, and work by yourself. It's a teamwork effort. We all have to work together. So, building those relationships is incredibly important. And it also allowed us to improve in-house training opportunities. If there's only two people at a station, they have to gather at some location in order to have at least four or five people to do some effective training. By having two stations with five members each, that allowed training to occur even in-house without moving, so that they could get things done and not have to worry so much about being interrupted because one company, one station could cover for another company during training. Okay, if we could... Okay. So, just to give you a little background, as far as how we decided to divide the town, Route 2 is a naturally occurring anomaly or district splitter for us. If you look at the North District, it's about 11 square miles, population of 12,200 people. And the South District is just slightly smaller, at 9.2 square miles, and a population just slightly smaller at 11,800. So, it served as a very nice area for us or place for us to delineate and allow a North District and a South District. Each district would then be served by an ALS ambulance and an engine or ladder company, with each district backing up each other. Next slide, please. As I told you, Criterion Associates in June of 24 gave us a, completed a study, a retrospective study based on call volume and response times. As you can see on this map, all the red areas are where most of our responses were. So, there was obviously a need for North Acton, and the very small white circles you can see is where the four current stations were at the time of the study. Next slide, please. So, Phase 1, as I said, South Acton, we had a ladder that was always staffed, and then the Engine 23 and Rescue 34, which were normally at Station 3, were together down at Station 2, and that was a cross-staffed piece of apparatus. You got either the engine or the rescue. We didn't have enough staff to staff them both. And Car 30 was the shift captain, who maintains and runs the shift during the day but is quite frequently out most of the day, which is now being somewhat resolved with our Fire Prevention Officer. There's also a hazmat trailer and a boat located down at South Acton. Station 4, we had Engine 24, Rescue 35, and Car 31, which is our ALS coordinator. Those three pieces of apparatus were staffed all the time based on that model. We also had a brush truck, a UTV boat, and a reserve engine and a reserve car up there at that location. Next slide, please. When we moved to Station... Excuse me. When we moved to Phase 2, the only thing that was done really was we moved the captain and the crew from Engine 23 and Rescue 34 over to West Acton. That just provided them a little better living conditions. As you are aware, we work 24-hour shifts, and a minimum of a quarter of our lives is working with each other during our working years. So, it's very important that we have acceptable conditions for them. They were still close enough to be able to respond within their district and still maintain their district posture, as well as North Acton, which remained at the same level and could maintain their posture. Next slide, please. So, the results of the pilot to date. We don't currently have hard data as far as numbers from the call-in center on response times. Those are still under analysis. Three-member companies, as I mentioned to you, have proven efficient at various incidents. Increased station personnel has received a positive feedback. The 1 asterisk is when we were all crowded down in Station 5. And then there's been no appreciable delays in response that we've noticed. The data will have to determine the facts on that. Next slide, please. We still have continuing challenges. The limited staffing still requires cross-staffing of apparatus. Stations could be unoccupied even when apparatus is in the station, because if the ambulance is out of West Acton and they have to go into Boston, that station is unmanned for a period of time until they get back. Same thing, the ambulance could be left there unstaffed because they're out on a fire call somewhere. So, even though we have quote-unquote "full staffing," by cross-manning, the stations could indeed be unoccupied. Also, during training, we used to have medic Mondays, so everybody would report to the PSF for training. So, they would have to choose, okay, do I take the ambulance or do I take the engine? And one of them's going to be left unmanned. Same thing down south. Do I take the ladder or do I take the engine? Sometimes it was dictated to us by apparatus being in or out of service, but that's a choice we had to make based on various circumstances. Mutual aid response in the four-station model required a two-station response. We had to close two stations in order to support sufficient staffing for a known fire or major incident. That's due to the fact that oftentimes, the mutual aid companies serve as what's known as rapid intervention teams, and that is for firefighter rescue, and it requires four members. We also received that incoming mutual aid, and we request that we receive four members for a rapid intervention team. Training will still require now companies to get together at a location. As I said, it chooses us, it causes us to choose what apparatus to take in or out of service, and again, the stations could be unoccupied for a period of time. Next slide, please. We still are battling a shortage of firefighter/paramedics, but we are making some progress. And most of the departments that I have been speaking with, many are sending their current staff to paramedic training, and we have begun to do the same. Oversight still continues to be an issue. At least one station is going to be without an officer in charge. And then training, we've hired a number of new recruits, so now we're going to have to send them to the academy, which is a 10-week program. And oftentimes, depending upon availability, we try and send two at one time if possible. And also, with the advent of providing paramedic coverage so that medics can go to school, that's also going to require coverage of at least 12 hours each school day, and it's usually two days a week. Next slide, please. So, here's what our staffing model looks like based on what we have been allocated through the budget. Myself is the Fire Chief. I have an office manager, a newly hired Fire Prevention Officer, who I must say is doing an awesome job, very customer service-oriented and doing a fabulous work, catching up on a lot of permits. Deputy Chief Christopher Sammet. And then the Police Chief and myself, we share the dispatch supervisor. So, that's sort of a joint venture. On each shift, you'll have a captain, a lieutenant, and nine firefighters when we're fully staffed. We previously had an ALS coordinator, which has now been absorbed into three firefighter positions, one captain and two firefighters. And to elaborate a little bit further on our hiring practices, I'd like to introduce Deputy Chief Christopher Sammet.
Good evening, members of the Select Board. Tonight, I am here to provide an update on staffing within the Acton Fire Department and outline the steps of recruitment and retention. One of my responsibilities as a deputy is to recruit and recommend the hiring of potential new hires. I'm very passionate when it comes to the interview process, as I am looking for individuals that will work well within the Acton Fire Department. Over the past 14 months, we have hired 13 new employees, and two more are slated to begin over the next couple of months. New hires are filling vacancies within each of our four groups. Prior to this, new hires, our existing staff were carrying the increased workload, which led to much fatigue. With fewer vacancies, the overtime is spread more evenly among the members and has assisted improving morale. One of the major challenges we have faced is the difficulty in recruiting paramedics for open positions. Despite efforts in order to attract qualified paramedics, we have found the pool of candidates is limited and competitive. This is a trend that is being felt across the fire service. One new initiative we began to fill the many vacancies with help from the Human Resource and Hiring Committee was attending multiple job fairs at various tech schools, colleges, and academies. As this may not be an immediate solution to our staffing solution today, it is a way to reach those that may be interested in the future. Perhaps the biggest change we have made, as the Chief mentioned, is to address the challenge and ensure that we continue to provide the highest level of emergency care, is to send EMTs to paramedic school. As we are still aggressively recruiting paramedics to join the Acton Fire Department, this initiative will enable us to develop paramedics from within our existing staff and build a strong foundation for the future. Currently, we have two EMTs in paramedic school and one more starting in January. While this training is roughly nine months to complete, it is an important investment and solution to recruitment. It is projected that we will have at minimum of three new paramedics onboard this time next year. In the long term, this initiative will assist us build a more robust and self-sustaining workforce, reducing our reliance in external paramedic recruits and assuring our department remains flexible and responsive to future challenges. In closing, we have a lot more work to do, a few more positions to fill. However, I'm excited about where we have come and the future of the department. Thank you.
If I could get the next slide, please. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank everybody for helping out with this pilot program, Select Board. I appreciate your support in instituting this pilot program. Mr. Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager, appreciate it. And especially members of Local 1904, who have dealt with all the changes and uproar and things like that. I appreciate your cooperation. Our dispatch supervisor and dispatchers have had to deal with different changing responses. I certainly appreciate their efforts. Deputy Chief Chris Sammet has been working closely with me to develop various protocols or response operations and models. Our medical control physician, Dr. Ryan Kring, has been onboard with some of our changes. Police Department has been very helpful in working with us. And of course, the community at large, which it is our honor and privilege to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from any of my colleagues? David?
Thank you, Chief and Deputy Chief. Do you expect additional phases in the pilot program?
So, the current next phase is due to the fact that Station 3 is going to be closed. So, we're going to have to change our response model a little bit to determine how we're going to manage operations. We're actively discussing that now, and we anticipate that'll occur mid-December through mid-January, mid-Febuary. Beyond that, we're hoping to get the data before any additional decisions are made.
Okay. I mention that because the results of the pilot are essential to evaluate any station improvements going forward.
Absolutely. I concur with that.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for your leadership in pushing this forward. I think it's really important work, and all of the staff for their flexibility through all of the changes. I've definitely noticed, because I live a few houses down from the South Acton Station on School Street, how often now I see the crew and the trucks out, and they're doing some sort of training exercise. I think, you know, driving by in that neighborhood before the pilot... I think, you know, driving by in that neighborhood before the pilot, maybe a couple of times a year, I would see them out in the, in the front of the fire station, and now it's like once or twice a month. So I really appreciate that there's a lot more training and mentoring and supervision that's, that's able to occur. I would like to understand better the responses. So you mentioned the two in, two out. You want two crew members to show up for a potential need for a rescue. How does that work with three members on one apparatus? Are we just, we're expecting a second apparatus with additional staff to show up? I just, I need some more details to understand that fully.
Okay, so the two in, two out rule, as I said, is we're not supposed to send two in unless we have two out for rescue. There are some exceptions to that. And certainly if we can maintain communications and have somebody manning the pump so that we know that they have a water supply or that they'll be notified if their water supply is running out, that we would be able to take some extra efforts if it's assessed that there's someone to be rescued, a potential rescue or known rescue. And we would then take that opportunity to make as much progress as we can before the next piece of apparatus arrives.
Any other questions? Fran?
Thank you so much for all you do. I was curious, so you don't have an outcome of the pilot program just yet, and I was curious if you could maybe elaborate, can, can the town function with three stations? Is, is that something? Because I'm just looking down the road where we'll need to renovate a station, so, which is probably closer than we think. So I was just curious.
So we've operated with three stations in the past with our current staffing. So I don't think that's going to be a major issue. The idea is, though, to operate as efficiently and safely as we can. My firefighters can't help you if they can't maintain their safety. So that's of the utmost importance. Is my firefighter safety, fire prevention efforts, of course, on the public, but could we run with three? Yes, we could. We've proven we can run with two, but we don't have the station capacity to do so currently. As you are aware, a lot of our stations are older. Station One, I believe, is 1951, even though the card says 1960 or 61. I get, my source is William Clower, who's a great historian. And then the other two stations are right around 1960. So they're older stations, and they need some work desperately. I'd like to thank Town Manager and Buildings and Facility. They have updated the showers in two of our stations now. I've only been asking for that since I started. So I appreciate that that has gotten done. We have one more station to be done, which hopefully will be done at the same time as the Titan. But in answer to your question, yes, we could run with three with the current staffing if we had to, but we are always looking to improve our efficiencies.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public? All right, I got two thumbs up from the back. Thank you very much, Chief, Deputy Chief, and all the firefighters out there. Yep, Town Manager.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to thank the team as well. I think we have a pretty good showing here tonight of people that have been involved in helping to explore these different ways of providing services to the community. As mentioned by the chief and the deputy, there are a lot of challenges that the fire service across Massachusetts is facing. It's not necessarily an Acton issue, some of the staffing issues that we're having here. But I think being willing and flexible to try new things certainly has given us a lot of information. Whether we have the hard data or not, I know that the department operated effectively for the last year, regardless of any stations that they were in. So that's, to me, that's, that's good information. And that we certainly would want to make sure that anything we do in the future makes sense, but I'm very pleased with what we've done so far and the leadership shown by the administration and the team members here. And I think this is also a chance for the community. We tried to keep the information on the website the best we can about what's happening, but I thank Chief Arum for giving us an update presentation. We plan to do more presentations like this, this year. And if there's anything from the members of the public that you're hearing after tonight, we'd appreciate if you let us know so we can address any concerns that come up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe.
Okay, item six, consider fossil fuel free bylaw waiver request by Marcus Lewis Racket Club, Body Five, Nagog Park.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Paul Morris Pinnacle Construction here with Marcus Lewis on the fossil fuel waiver request. We did receive this afternoon, we received some information, correspondence from the building inspector with some public input and a few other questions. Sure. Let me start over. Okay. We did receive a correspondence this afternoon from the building inspector with some public input and some of his comments as well, as I believe. I do have on the line Andy Arsenal, engineer that helped us portray the information to date. We're not quite in a position to answer the building inspector's information he sent over this afternoon, but we come before you this evening looking for your input, any other questions, and then potentially ask for continuance and come back to you with a full, full-fledged answer to address the board's concerns as well as the building inspectors.
Okay, thank you. Before I open up to the board, see if the building commissioner would like to speak?
Thank you for having me tonight. Yeah, I reached out to the applicant this afternoon after a few conversations with some, some members of the community and some members of the board and let them know that, you know, compliance with the fossil fuel free bylaw was still a priority within the office and within the town, and that we thought that there were some ways to help them through the process to, to meet the requirements of the, of the bylaw. So, but they wanted to come before you tonight to let you know that they're interested in, in hearing what some of those options are or solutions so that they can go potentially full electric and then to also learn more about, you know, what MassSave might be able to do to help them.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask my colleagues if you have any questions or comments. Start with David.
Hi, thank you for coming in and thank you for supplying the answers to the first round of questions. I just want to say that in general, spaces that can be air-conditioned can be heated with heat pumps at, at reasonable cost compared to alternatives. It's almost always true. So I'd like to go over both first installation costs and then operating costs. So the, in general, also the amount of equipment needed to heat with heat pumps is similar to the amount of equipment to heat with fossil fuels. So if you have an air conditioner and a furnace to heat a space, you might need two heat pumps to heat that, heat that space, but it's not an overwhelming more equipment. You have, typically have the same number of boxes, if you will, in either case. And, and the cost is usually not much different, and I think the numbers that you've given us so far reflect that, right? So the installation costs you have, it was about 12% more with heat pumps than with, with fossil fuel equipment. That's about $1,000 a year, amortized over 25 years. However, your current numbers don't consider incentives. The incentives, the commercial incentives can be significant, many tens of thousands of dollars. In this project, I, my guess is that the, the installation cost of the equipment would be, a heat pump equipment would be significantly less with incentives than would an air conditioner and fossil fuels. You do have to, however, make sure that the equipment that you're installing is on MassSave's qualified parts list. I tried to look for the equipment that you've specced so far, and I could not find it on their qualified parts list. And that's not to say it's not there. I'm not an absolute expert on that list, but I've been in that list before and I could not, I could not find it. Or sometimes things are marketed under other names. In, in the answers to the questions that I, that I asked originally, you didn't provide AHRI numbers for the equipment. If we move forward in this process, I would like to see AHRI numbers for all the pieces of equipment because it allows me to look up the specs for, for anything. You know, so it's, it's not ambiguous anymore. You know, we can find out for sure if it's on the MassSave list. MassSave also will help you here if you would like to do that. Earlier today, I went through a mock consultation with them to, to understand a little bit of the, the process, the commercial process. I'm really, really familiar with the residential process, but I wanted to understand the commercial process better. So, and I think you get a lot out of that. Plus, one of the really important things that the consultant mentioned this morning in this mock consultation is that the website says that, you know, you should pick some equipment, and then I forget what the middle step is, and the third step is get a, a letter, a rebate confirmation letter, I forget what it's called, it's in my notes, rebate commitment letter from MassSave. And that rebate commitment letter lasts for a year, and it's a commitment by MassSave to pay you a particular amount of money if you move forward with your project. And that, that commitment letter lasts even if the rules change. So MassSave has typically changed the rules on January 1st. Usually they add a little bit of things or they change the amount of monies, and sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down, and they, they change them to, you know, to push the, the state-of-the-art forward a little. But that commitment letter, is my understanding, lasts for a year after it's issued and stays intact even across the changes in the, in the, in the rules. I, I do want to make sure that whatever you're looking at, you make sure that for your own interests is, is good, is good equipment, because I did not, like I said, see that on the MassSave cold climate list. And anyway, I just want to make sure you're, you're buying stuff that's going to work well for you and provide you, you know, plenty of heat in, in our, in our cold climate. Also, I wanted to make sure that you guys understood the specialized building code requires that you put in the electric infrastructure for heat pumps, even if you don't install heat pumps. So you don't save any electric money by, by heating with gas. And again, the, the difference, the differences here are small even without incentives and with incentives would be much less. For, for operating costs, in, in general, heat pumps cost more to operate than gas in the dead, the dead center of the winter, like January, but much less to operate in the spring and fall, and that evens out. And so on an annual basis, there isn't much difference. It can go either way. In the state of Massachusetts statistics, they say that it's, heat pumps are less expensive 50% of the time, which means 50% of the time they're not, right? So it's a, it's a coin flip. But in any case, the differences are small. The differences that you've outlined in your numbers are so large that I, I just cannot believe the numbers, right? And I, I did find one problem in the numbers. Those numbers assume a coefficient of performance of two on an annual basis. The equipment that you've specced says it has a coefficient of performance between three and four on an annual basis. So if I use 3.5, just take the center of the 3.4, it reduces the electric costs from $109,000 a year to $62,000 a year. I'm still not sure that those calculations are correct even there. The, you spec 330 megawatt hours a year for, if you used heat pumps to heat the building. I didn't see, the, the work is not specified, so I can't critique how you came up with that number. But we, we'd want to make sure that the, the number is, is correct. Also, again, just for your, this is not a requirement of the waiver or anything, the, the numbers spec the same amount of load for both cooling and heating. That's really, really unusual. I, again, almost always, the heating load is more than the cooling load. And I didn't know whether in this building you really accounted for that, and maybe there's sun load on the translucent roof of this building, and so you've accounted for that and so the cooling load is up, or whether it's an oversight on the, on the part of the people putting together the numbers. But again, you do not want to go ahead and install a system and have it not work well for you, right? It is easily possible to make heat pumps heat this, this structure, but we don't, you don't want to underheat it, right? You want to make sure you have the right amount of, of heat here. And again, the MassSave program will help you there. MassSave has certified contractors that make sure that they adhere to all the requirements for MassSave. Those are required for residential customers. They're not required for commercial customers, but you have a closer connection with Mass, with MassSave if you do that. Finally, I want to say that going forward, it's really, really likely that electricity costs are going to be more stable than gas costs. In eastern Massachusetts, many of our gas lines are between 50 and 100 years old. They're all going to have to be replaced at extraordinary cost, extraordinary cost, you know, a million dollars a mile, all, all going back to the ratepayers. Electricity costs, on the other hand, when the offshore wind hits in New England, that'll push the supply side of the electricity cost lower. And I don't think it'll affect the delivery costs, but the, the supply costs will, will be pushed lower. So over the long term, over the life of this building, you'll see less, almost certainly see less energy inflation with electricity than with gas. And one of the other reasons for that is electricity is not really an energy source, it's a pipe. And the nice thing about electricity is they can choose any one of a handful of sources to choose from. The four cheapest in order are solar, wind, hydro, and nuclear. All the fossil fuel sources are at the top of the list. As we increase the amount of the lower ones, we push the fossil fuels off, electricity can remain, can remain stable. So I'm assuming like, like my fellow board members, I really want you to have a successful project here. I am, you know, I want to help you as much as I can. I'm happy to supply any background information. I know I'm in the, in the position of being one of the judges for the, the waiver, and so you might not want me, but we have other coaches in town. We have MassSave, you know, you know, we, we want you to be successful here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alissa?
I don't have nearly as much to share with you, but like David, I also want this project to be successful. I really appreciate Marcus Lewis has been in Acton for decades, and I want you to stay here. I also want the town to be successful at the demonstration project that we are a part of. There are only eight other communities along with us. Yeah, Deborah, I looked it up, and apparently Northampton didn't like sign on. So, you know, the, the state has put a lot of faith in us, and I don't want that, you know, to be perceived as being misplaced. I don't think that we are at risk of that if we provided a waiver here and there, but it's really important that we do everything that we can to be successful. I have a couple of questions, and you don't have to answer them tonight. So rather than have a back and forth, just like David, I'll, I'll list them. I'm wondering if there are ways to decrease the load, like can you choose a different fabric that has higher insulation, a higher R-value? Are there other capital changes that can be made to reduce the operating and maintenance costs? Can solar be useful for decreasing the cost of electricity? Can solar be useful for decreasing the cost of electricity? I really want to know, I have two members of my four-person family who play a lot of tennis, both indoor and outdoor. I want to know why this facility will be heated to 72 degrees, because that seems really uncomfortable for people who are running around sweating and heating up their bodies. You know, I keep my house, depending on the season, 64, 66, maybe 68, 70, and we're just, you know, lounging, maybe cooking, but certainly 72 seems really high. I was curious about the comparison of, it was just listed Hanscom, like what facility at Hanscom? An airplane hangar? What size was that hangar? Is it really comparable to the tennis facility? Or is it just, you know, a sheet of metal? Is it not well insulated, does it have a comparable R-value? So, that's a question of, you know, if we're going to compare costs, why was that facility selected? You know, how similar is it? And I guess lastly, you know, we have to make a determination, what does economically infeasible or unviable mean? Does it, you know, what is that number? So, a figure of how much more it will cost to construct, David says very little, they're very comparable, how much more, if more, will it cost to operate? What does that mean? Is it just a little bit more expensive? Is it a lot more expensive? I can't really judge that unless I know what percentage of the operating cost is it, because it's a big difference if it's, you know, the increase in cost is 5% of the total operating cost, or maybe it's 50% of the total operating cost. You know, I'm going to decide, oh, economically infeasible if it's a higher percentage of your total operating cost. So, I'd like those numbers as well, and that's it.
Thank you. Jim.
Hi. I think it's great that we're trying to proceed to a win-win-win situation here with, you know, you guys having a successful tennis and pickleball facility, with the town having less, you know, less emissions. And I really hope that the information that you, you know, acquire over the next period of time will help you figure out how to do that. I do believe it's possible. I had a couple of other ideas to toss into your bucket that you're, of ideas that you're collecting here. One is to make sure that you understand from the building department, if you did get a waiver, that would mean that you were still subject to the stretch code, as was being explained. There's no waivers for the stretch code. You would be going through what they call the mixed-fuel pathway, and it has higher performance requirements than the all-electric pathway. So, even though on the surface it might seem, oh, I get to use gas, it's easier, the actual requirements are more onerous. So, you want to make sure that you have a design that can meet the more onerous requirements of the mixed-fuel pathway, if you end up, you know, deciding to go that way, and if we end up giving you a waiver. Let's see. I want to agree on the 72 degrees. I mean, I understand that's a typical temperature that an engineer is going to use for a typical residential situation, but, you know, running around playing tennis or even pickleball, 72 is going to be awfully warm. The other thing I might want you to take a look at is to revisit the assumption that you're not going to need AC. I think that you're going to have to shut down your facility on the hot days, and we have more and more days over 90 degrees every summer. It's not going to be humanly safe to play tennis or pickleball there, and even if it's on the margin of safety, it's not going to be pleasant for your customers. And of course, you've seen that, you know, if you do end up deciding you need to add AC, that brings the advantages of the air-source heat pumps way up, because they're single pieces of equipment, providing both air conditioning and heating. The other idea you might want your engineer to look at is, so, oh, so, as an answer, a partial answer for Alyssa, when they mentioned the Hanscom, that's just a place where temperature records are kept. So, it's trying, they're trying to understand, you know, what is the, what is the design temperature? How cold does it typically get? And they have really good records for Hanscom, and it's typically used around here as the standard. So, you know, so what that would, what the Hanscom design temperature ends up being, what, like 2 degrees or something? It's very cold. If you design your load to cover, you know, even 50% of your heating load, or even less, what you'll find is that it's only in a very small handful of days that the heating won't be able to keep up. And on those days, what that means is it's slightly cooler inside the bubble, and that might be fine for some people, playing in like, you know, late fall conditions, 40, 50 degrees outside is lovely. They like, you know, it's much better than the too hot. So, you may be able to get away with a much smaller load, which will reduce your operating costs, both on the gas path or on the all-electric path. That's all I got. Thanks so much for coming in.
Thank you. Fran.
I have nothing, I think my questions were already posed. I do want to add that we do want you to be successful, and I appreciate looking into, you know, alternatives for heating. Are the bubbles, the bubbles won't open and close?
Yeah, just for the record, they're not bubbles. They are rigid-framed, steel-framed buildings. It's called a tension fabric building. So, it's more akin to a real firm building than a bubble.
Okay. And I thought 72 degrees was really warm, too.
Thank you. Yeah, a couple of the questions or the comments that I'd have that you can factor in is, we've heard quite a bit about, you know, possible rebates and benefits through MassSave program. I know last winter, due to extraordinarily high cost of natural gas, and a lot of those costs were related to the state mandates of payments to MassSave, and even our governor cut back on the MassSave program. So, I think it's important for all of us to understand that, not what MassSave might have been a year ago, but what is MassSave going to be doing for us and you folks now, to see whether that's really a viable program or not. It's certainly a changing environment. Now, we've heard comments from the board here, and I've seen written comments that have come to us, but personally, I'm swayed by documents that actually have a professional engineer's stamp on them. So, I certainly want to hear everybody's opinion, but whatever you bring forward to us the next time, whether you stick with this engineer, or have another one, or however you want to do it, I'm persuaded more by actual professional credentials rather than opinions, however well-informed they might be. There was also some comments about electricity prices going to be going down. Well, I built my house in 1974 with resistance baseboard electric heating, which was a cheap way to install it, and we were told, oh, you know, with nuclear coming on and with trashed energy plants coming on, the electric prices are just going to go down, and it's going to be practically nothing. It's not going to be a major concern for you. Well, 50 years later, none of those things came true. For my own heating, I do have air-source heat pumps, and I've also got propane-fired, forced-warm air furnace, which seems to be a good hybrid system for my residents. But I'm very skeptical about folks predicting where the utility market is going to go. In my career working for the town, one of my jobs was trying to predict what our utility bills are going to be 18 to 24 months in advance, because that's what you had to do for budgeting. And it was a nasty job, and we had lots of miscalculations. But with the town, we had a bottom-line budget, and there were times when we ended up having to steal money from other accounts in order to pay the utility bills. I suspect that with your operation, you don't have the luxury of that large a budget. So, I'm certainly sympathetic with that, and I personally would be more convinced with proven data that's been vetted by credential professionals. And finally, you know, as a percentage of operating cost, I'm certainly interested in hearing that, you know, what that impact be. I think you've heard from all of my colleagues on the board, and I'll just reiterate it. Yours is a great business, it's been well-established in town, and we want you to continue and thrive here. And I don't want to see you unduly burdened or driven out of town just because of this one matter. So, I would certainly welcome any further reports that you bring forward as we continue with this, and see where it goes from there. The, I don't know if the building commissioner has any other questions. If not, I can open it up to the public. Any comments from the public?
Deborah Symes, 109 Concord Road. I'm going to go, I'm going to talk kind of fast, so buckle up. First reminder to all of us that the climate emergency has not gone away. We are pulled in multiple directions by developments on the federal and some on the state levels, but this careening carbon and methane train remains full speed ahead and is gaining on the progress we're making. In May 2020, the average atmospheric CO2 level was 416 parts per million. Today, it's 425. The level identified as a maximum to avoid the worst climate impacts is 350. As a town, we've committed to doing our best to mitigate emissions and prepare for climate impacts, including a commitment to phase out eventually the use of fossil fuels. Every one of us needs to use this as a primary framework for evaluating potential actions. We had the good sense in 2021, sorry, to pass a bylaw and a home rule petition, to prescribe fossil fuel hookups, you've heard some of this, in new construction and significant rehabs, with the common, sorry, with the state's ultimate and broader action, we became one of nine ultimately communities in the Commonwealth able to be part of the municipal fossil-fuel-free building demonstration program and to enact such bylaws. There is, of course, a waiver request option. The bylaw section relevant to this discussion reads, "The building commissioner may grant a waiver subject to the requirements of this chapter in the event that compliance with the provisions of this chapter makes a project financially infeasible or impractical to implement. Compliance with this chapter may be considered infeasible if, without limitation, as a result of factors beyond the control of the applicant, proponent, the additional cost of the project over the long term, including any available subsidies, would make the project economically unviable." All of this made me start thinking, oh, hmm, what's missing for me here is an effective rubric for evaluating waiver requests. We don't really have that, as far as I know. Such a rubric should set out the criteria by which a request would be evaluated, identify who would be responsible for such an evaluation, establish what documentation would be required for this, and explain what factors must be taken into consideration in the decision-making. Absent those, I honestly don't know how the select board could be expected to make an informed, transparent, and justifiable decision. Such decisions, in my opinion, must use the climate goals and aspirations of the town as part of the deliberations, and claims of financial, excuse me, impracticality must be thoroughly vetted and weighed against the additional climate harms that waivers could cause. I also think this kind of evaluation belongs not solely in the hands of our esteemed building commissioner. The waiver of that, the waiver section of the bylaw says that the select board shall, blah, 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 issue and may thereafter amend guidance regarding the granting of waivers and describing reasonable conditions that may be placed on a waiver. Perhaps the select board could, with the building commissioner, manage such an evaluation process. I also suggest that claims of economic infeasibility may require independent evaluation, done not by the commissioner nor by the select board members, but by a neutral entity with relevant expertise. We might do well to reach out to other communities, the other nine or the other eight, I guess, to learn what they have devised for evaluating these kinds of waiver requests, including those made on claims of financial infeasibility. That's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, I'm Katie Raymond. I'm at Robert Road in Acton. I'm, in my professional life, I'm a director of energy for a mechanical engineering firm, and I'm a professional engineer, so if you want me to stamp my comments, I'm happy to. Most of you guys have mentioned my questions as well and comments. I think you've covered the majority of the issues that I was thinking coming in here. I did want to mention a few things that I don't specifically think that it's a specialized code problem. You know, Acton adopted the specialized code, which I'm thrilled about and I 100% support, but so many of the things you're going to be running up against are stretch code requirements that also apply in this town. So, in terms of like, I don't want you to feel like, oh, we got to get out of Acton, they're making it so hard. I feel like the things that we're talking about are applicable to all stretch code communities. For example, the envelope requirements, I don't know what R-values were assumed in calculating your load, but I believe you're subject to like a R-30 roof and the envelope calculation, so I want to just make sure that that's kind of maybe spelled out in your next response when you're showing your load calculations. I don't know if you guys have any intention to install any type of solar, any type of solar installation? Is it something you're considering? You don't have to answer. I'll just say that it's a stretch code requirement that the roof be solar-ready, 40% of it be solar-ready, so you're going to have that infrastructure up there. Again, that's building code, state building code. And then, the last thing that I see as being a potential problem is the requirement that at the end of construction, you have to show your infiltration rate, so, as being very, very tight. It has to be like less than 0.35, which is a very, very tight infiltration rate, and I'm not sure if that's achievable with this type of building construction. You might want to show examples of other buildings that have been able to accomplish that with a tensile structure. That also plays into how you calculate your heating load. So, all this comes back to the fact that you're basing your numbers on a heating load and how to accomplish it mechanically, and, you know, I just want to make sure you're setting up that load correctly when you're calculating it. You know, personally, I don't think it's such a bad thing to have an element of your heating that is provided by gas. It does kick you into the mixed-fuel pathway, which means you have to install solar, so I see other benefits to it. It's kind of a trade-off to decide which way to go. So, but I wish you luck with the project.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do you have anything coming in online, David? Okay. One other comment that I would make, and again, it's a real question, when we look at the long-term cost, you know, there's discussion about offshore wind. My understanding is that at least some of the permits that were already approved for offshore wind farms off the south coast have been delayed and might be revoked, and what the long-term impact of that is going to be, thinking of the long term, how long it takes to get those things permitted and constructed. And even as administration has changed in Washington, I don't think...
And even as administration has changed in Washington, I don't think, I don't think the offshore wind is going to be any more of a boon than, you know, a lot of the other fuel sources.
Thanks, I just have one more comment about who we might be receiving more information from, because you suggested that we might get different numbers back and the applicant might use the same engineering firm, a different engineering firm. I guess I'd like to hear from the board, since we, since this is the first time for a commercial waiver that we're discussing this, you know, we see and we saw for the site plan special permit, the use special permit, a third-party engineering review to look at all of the design specs and share comments on that. So that is a process that's already been established for other permitting processes and obviously a waiver is not a permit, but in order to have everybody confident in that vetted, stamped, professional, credentialed information that's coming in, typically it would be provided by a neutral third party, paid for by the applicant. I don't know, I'd like to hear from the board, like, is the applicant's engineering analysis and cost comparison acceptable to us for making that determination, or would we like to explore asking for somebody selected by our esteemed building commissioner or someone else? I don't know.
I, well, okay, I'll take other comments. Jim?
Just in response to that, I believe I was the select board member who raised his hand months ago and said, oh, I'll work with staff on guidelines, since that's mandatory, right in the bylaw. And so apologies for not having completed that task. They might reasonably include a third-party review. I'm hesitant, I'd be reluctant to try to impose that on the current applicant because, you know, we hadn't written that down and I think we're gonna stumble through okay. In this case, the closest thing they're getting to, they would be getting to third-party guidance is, you know, talking to MassSave. And the commercial MassSave folks are skilled, they're not just, you know, they're not just figuring out, you know, how much rebates you're gonna get and, you know, how many free light bulbs they can give you. They actually have the skills to go in and, you know, look at designs and help analyze them. So I think that's probably the best we can do this time around, but I think it's a great thing to look at for guidance for future. And there will be more waiver requests, so it'll be good for us to get that done.
Thank you. David?
So I just want to say that the applicant provided, you know, answers to all the questions that the building commissioner sent to them. There are only two things that I thought were missing and if they choose to continue with this process, I would like to see the AHRI numbers for all the pieces of equipment you're intending, you're proposing to use, and some work in showing the work of the calculations, and so I can understand the calculations. Other than that, I thought the answers were pretty good this time around. I do think probably we need to formalize a set of questions that we give to every applicant. I do also want to just emphasize here, because I think the worst possible outcome is that you go with a all-electric solution and it doesn't meet your needs, and that would be, you know, I just don't want to see that. I will note that the Greenheck equipment, if you look at the specs that I was able to find for it, and I, without AHRI numbers, said it operates down to zero degrees Fahrenheit. I would not recommend a system that only provides heat down to zero degrees Fahrenheit. It's easy to find commercial systems that provide heat below minus five, so, easy, you know, they're, and I don't think any major difference in cost. So maybe that's why it's actually not on the MassSave list, if I'm correct that it's not on the MassSave list. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess if we have no other comments, I believe that if you folks have any questions of us, and I believe you discussed about, you wanted to have a little more time to interface with the building commissioner and...
Yeah, I don't think this is a public hearing, I need to ask for a continuance, but, I mean, that's essential what we're doing.
Okay, I would say...
Put us on the agenda for your next meeting in two weeks, we'll work with the building commissioner and get the others. I wrote down, as best I could, wrote down all the questions, and we'll see if we can get them answered.
Yeah, Marcus would like to add some stuff. Yeah, I'd like to respond to a few things that were asked that I'm able to respond to, some of them, the more technical ones require more of the engineering background I can't speak to. Let me first start just by saying a little bit more maybe about myself. So I have a property where I was one of the first adopters of a heat pump. I saw the value in it. I'm a firm believer that our climate is changing due to man-made activities, for sure. I have an electric car. I've told people, and I very much feel this way, I feel very guilty that I run an operation where every day I see people buy tennis balls in a plastic can. I think, how much plastic am I responsible for putting back in the environment? So I make recycling at my place a priority, even though I know recycling is not what it's sold to us by the plastic industry. I get it. So when I, so I'm on this path because where I was, the, honestly, the environment became untenable. I was leasing the environment and it just was not gonna go forward, so I have to move. And in doing so, I had a choice between a bubble, some of you guys know what a bubble is, and this tension fabric structure. Tension fabric structures have historically been far more expensive than a bubble. They've come down, but it's still more expensive. And I did that because, I do, I mean, look, I have, some of you guys know, I do have a bubble in Acton, it's over at Nagog Woods. It just, it does, it just burns through the gas like you read about. And even though the tension fabric is gonna cost me literally, I don't want to say the word, because it kills me hundreds of thousands of dollars more to do it, that's the path I wanted to go down, because I felt the prices were comparable enough for me to do that. And I figured, you know what, over the long haul, you know what, I'm gonna save, because instead of being at like R-value three or four, I'll be at R-value nineteen, so that's great. To the woman who came up and asked about solar, so I asked my team about that, and I said, hey, guys, what about solar, I'd love to do solar, can we do it? And speaking to the building manufacturer, unfortunately, that really isn't an option. These tension fabric structures do not withstand that kind of load so well. They've done it one time, they've done it down in Florida. They don't even know how it would fare in this kind of environment. There's no way I could take that risk, so unfortunately, solar's out. What I'm kind of wondering now, I'm hearing about the mixed fuel use, would that mean, would that mean that if we did get the waiver, but I can't do solar, then that's kind of, you know, not an option, no matter what? David, to your point, well, actually, before you even kind of go kind of piece by piece, let me say that I greatly appreciate, I see a struggle with some of you guys. So on one hand, I feel the support, I mean, I know that sometimes when people come before you, it may be a project you are not comfortable with, you don't like, and they feel it. I mean, I feel the support I get, which is great. By the same token, I understand that you are tasked by the town with this provision, which I support, I support being responsible about the climate. So I really appreciate the position you're in. I don't take it personally at all, you know, David, you were very vocal last time, but I get it. So David, you asked about the MassSave program, when I first moved into the previous building I was in, I took advantage of that, and actually, I saved a lot of money when I changed the lights to LEDs. I was one of the first ones to do that, I thought, great, let me, you know, get this in, MassSave helped a lot, it cost me tens of thousands of dollars, but I really didn't have, but it's all right, you know, let's get it done, we'll make up for it later. I saw something in a comment about, you know, the rebates. Look, if those rebates are real and they're that much, that would be great, I would be excited if those rebates are really like that. Someone else made the point though about, oh, you made a point, because one of my questions was, you know, what happens if these rebates change? We had talked about this, you know, because they change all the time, you said a commitment letter, that's great, if we can get a letter that says, hey, a year from now, I love it, that's great, that's helpful. Another question or point that you made, hold on, hold on, okay, well, maybe I can't quite remember, but anyway, but that was helpful. To the seventy-two degrees, okay? So actually, I wasn't certain about that number, but we do keep it relatively warm, and I know, look, when it's humid, okay, versus dry, it makes a big difference. If it's like sixty-eight and humid, you're still feeling pretty good. If it's sixty-nine, sixty-eight, you know, and dry, it's pretty cool. So we want to keep people pretty comfortable. So we do kind of keep it maybe up there, maybe not quite seventy-two, but pretty close. Let's see, what else? There was another thing, what was the question that you had?
AC.
Oh, right, right. I know, so you would think that you were in one of these buildings that you would cook like in an oven. So at the other facility where there's no AC, actually, it's pretty cool. If the thing is relatively well insulated, there's a fair amount of albedo or reflectivity that happens. So these indoor environments tend to be pretty cool, even in an uninsulated bubble sometimes. People prefer that maybe over being in the direct sunlight. So this is gonna be an insulated structure that is going to definitely reflect off some of that. I will say, another concern that we have, a very strong concern, is that, so if we go electric, it's gonna require a really heavy electrical load and, yeah, and we're not sure if, like, how much of an upgrade that'll be. Now, David, if I'm here, if I heard you correctly, that's the other thing I was thinking of, I think you said that if we get the waiver, we would still have to upgrade the electric infrastructure as if we, okay, so either way, we will have to do that, so no matter what direction we go in, we'll have to do that. Okay, all right, no, that's good for us to know. Yeah, good.
Yes, that's part of, so Ms. Raymond and Ed Mullen, our building commissioner, both spoke to this a little bit, the specialized energy code requires the electric infrastructure for heat pumps, even if you don't put in heat pumps, because what happens is, you know, as we, as the state gets further and further into the crisis here, we're, if we allowed you to put in fossil fuels in the next round, the state probably would not allow you to do it. And they don't want an excuse to say we can't do it because the wiring is not done. So they're making you do the wiring now. Now, I have no idea whether there are exceptions for fabric roofs for air conditioning and the other requirements, I don't know, Mr. Mullen may know, but, so that's the specialized energy code, which is also Ms. Raymond said, that many of the requirements are there, are in the stretch code, which is adopted by most of the state, right? It's not just Acton, we're one step up, but we're not, you know, the rest of the state in this code is not that much different. So it's, you have to do the electric stuff anyway, I was gonna say something else, but I don't remember what that was. So I just want, my expectation here is that, and I, so I met with someone from MassSave this morning, along with the town sustainability director, I confirmed that the incentives from MassSave are available now, I confirmed that they're available in new construction, that I believe, and I am not the committing thing, so I can't tell you for sure, that's why I need to talk to MassSave, that it would be about $2,500 a ton. If you're doing seventy tons, that's, or seventy-five tons, that's $185,000 or something. That's not chump change, right? My expectation here is that with heat pumps, this project will cost you less to start with. There will be, my expectation here is there'll be a little bit more operating cost. I don't know how much, you know, we, I would love to get into these calculations more, we can try to get a better estimate, but there are two types of reduction in electric rates. One is, as our chair, Mr. Charter, said, you know, we could take a guess at the offshore wind and whether that'll happen, you know, it looks like right now that the Connecticut-Rhode Island project is gonna happen, the Massachusetts project is not gonna happen. But there's also administrative reduction. As of November 1st of this year, if you have heat pumps in a residence, all the commercial heat company, the electric companies are reducing prices by some cents per kilowatt-hour. In the case of ever-source, we expect that to be about seven cents a kilowatt-hour. Unfortunately, this year, that does not apply to businesses. The state D O E R is pushing the D P U to make it apply to businesses as well, but as of November 1st, it's not. So we know that that seven cents is happening, you can go fight, read news articles about it and everything, so, but we don't know yet whether there'll be, that those reductions will go to business. There's lots of discussion, mostly regulatory discussion, there's no law required here, the D O E R is, like I said, pressuring the D P U to make the utilities reduce the prices for transmission. And just so you know, the reason for that is, heat pumps in winter do not stress the grid, right? The stresses to the grid come in the summer, and so heat pump users overpay for transmission stress. And so that's why, that's the rationale for changing that. So, yeah, fingers crossed that the D P U makes that apply to you, so I hope so.
David, with the rebates, does that go to just, you know, your capital expenses, or does it also apply to your potential operational costs?
It does not apply to operational costs. It is offset to, of the installation and it goes to the person who pays the bill, which I presume is you, right? So if you're, if you, you know, one of these estimates here was $225,000 for the system, if these calculations are correct, you'd get $175,000, $187,000 from MassSave for that.
Okay.
Now, and I said my expectation right now is that the operating cost would be a little higher, that's just my gut expectation. I am really, I'm really interested in this subject, I am really happy to talk to you, I understand that I'm on this side of the desk, I don't have to talk to you, right? So, but we have, there are lots of people to talk to, to get good information here.
All right. The, you know, and the numbers that I, so the engineer who kind of put our stuff together had asked me for my bills, and at first I gave him a few and he said, no, you know, give me, I want a longer, you know, I wanted a better kind of sample and so forth. So that's where that came from, and those were actual numbers, not like off a website or what the ever-source might cost or whatever, but that's what I'm, kind of what I've been paying. And I'm fine paying a little more to be better, I really don't mind that at all. What I'm concerned about is that, you know, my continued overhead, or, it's funny, you know, you had mentioned how you see electrical costs going down, you know, the chair, completely different perspective, and we've seen electrical costs really sort of rise. I just have to temper the risk, right? I mean, you know, if it spikes up a lot, yeah, it's a problem. But the thing I don't want to do is, is I don't want to backtrack and then say, oh, this tension fabric is not gonna be viable, and now I gotta go back to like a bubble. Then we all lose. Then I'm gonna put up this thing, which honestly is gonna... Then I'm gonna put up this thing, which honestly is going to cost me less, I will save probably about $300K on the putting them up, I'll save probably a couple hundred thousand on the fire suppression that I don't need in that structure, I mean, you know, and it'll just be like an economic decision. But I do want to be the kind of citizen I preach about, be responsible, you know, try to do the right thing when you can. And again, I appreciate, I do, I feel the struggle you guys have, so I get it. So I think what we're going to do is what we're going to take this information, which has been great, do some more math, you know, see if, see if it can work, and then we'll come back and just kind of give a final presentation about it.
Can I just say that one of the things with the incentives, MassSave pays for the incentives for anything that's on their qualified parts list. They don't pay incentives for anything that's not on their qualified part, although there is a process to get something put on, so if you think something should be put on, there's a way to ask them to do that, and they will or they won't, depending. But one of the things you can do is take the fact that they're, they'd be giving you incentives, invest some of that in getting more efficient heat pumps, which will probably match the operating cost of a gas system, right? There's just not that much difference, right? Overall, we see it again and again and again in all, there are lots of, like, you know, the new Stop &amp; Shop has AirSource heat pumps. This building, we're working on the design for AirSource heat pumps, probably with bigger heat pumps than for your structures. So it is, you know, it's possible to heat big spaces with heat pumps.
Yeah, blame me, David, I honestly, you sound, it sounds great, and if I were at a sermon here, I'd be like, sign me up. And I do, I do, I do, I really hope. I mean, if it works, it's great, I've done the right thing, I've made everyone happy, I'm happy, that'll be great. So, yeah, we'll talk with our engineer and our people, and, yeah, that'd be great. So I appreciate all that information, I know, I see my guy took a ton of notes, so, yeah.
Okay, Alyssa has one more question.
Yeah, I want to win the we're journeying at 8:15 prize. Because you just mentioned that you provided your electric bills to the engineer to do these calculations, I've been in the facility, and I don't remember it being a tensile fabric, like it was a brick and mortar building, and then I know the other one is a bubble, so are those comparable? And I feel silly that I suggested solar, because that obviously won't work on a fabric roof, but there are certainly solar canopies that can be placed on a parking lot, so that's another option to reduce those electric bills.
Just to clear that up, the current electric bill was provided just for the basis kilowatt-hours cost, right? So it wasn't compared to, he spends a thousand a month in this building, it was the raw data of the local cost, right? So the engineer had that to work from versus a national average or state average or anything, it was Acton's cost.
We, our next Select Board meeting is October 6th, and after that is October 20th. Please has control over what goes on, those agendas, so certainly work with our Building Commissioner and look forward to seeing you folks again.
Yeah, I think we can formulate a reply for your 10-6 if available.
Okay, we'll see if we can make that happen. Thank you. Have a good night.
Would you like a motion? You just consent already, right?
Yes, I'm looking for a...
I move to adjourn. Second.
Yes.
Moved in second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions. 8:15.